Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, let's pray. Creator and Father, may each of us in attendance today and watching on television be reminded of your love and mercy that you have made available to us through your Son. May we walk by his example, loving each other, forgiving each other, bearing with one another, and serving one another. Thank you, Father, for those who serve Burleigh County. Protect them as they fulfill their calling to our county. Father, may our Commissioners tonight seek your wisdom and your will for Burleigh County. May we have a spirit of unity and peace in this place tonight. I pray that you'll be with us, heal those among us that are sick, and we pray these things in the name of the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. Amen. Please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
First thing is the County Weed Board and Commissioner Schwab will sit in for Commissioner Bakken, although Commissioner Bakken is on the line.
January 6, 2025, and the roll call of members.
Mr. Schwab.
Here.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Here.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Mr. Bakken.
Here.
Chair Bitner.
Here.
All members present.
Approval of agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Call the roll.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Chair Bitner.
Yes.
Number three, consideration of November 18, 2024, meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Munson. Or Commissioner Woodcocks.
Yes.
Chair Bitner.
Yes.
Number four, we are going to be talking with Burleigh County Weed Officer Johnson and opening and reading of right-of-way bids.
Looks like all the documents for the first one are in hand. Do you want me to pass them around for you guys to look at, and then you can discuss them, or do you want me to read the amount?
As long as the, I would think that as long as they have the certificate of insurance, their application license, and their bond present there, I wouldn't see why we'd pass them around, but read the company's name if you would, please.
The first company is Western Escavation LLC. And their bid amount, our spraying unit on truck, as outlined in the offering, so they have three trucks. One is at $150 an hour. That's equipment and one man furnished. One is at $200 an hour, that's equipment and two men furnished, and one is at $125 per hour, and that's a two-and-a-half gallon backpack with a six-foot hose. The second one is from Fertilon. All of the documentation is in place. He lists three trucks plus a backup truck. His rate for equipment with one man is $110 an hour. Equipment with two men, $160 an hour, and it's equipment, or two-and-a-half gallon backpack with a six-foot hose at $110 per hour. Again, that was for Fertilon. Hi, Julie. And the third one appears to be from AA Yardworks LLC. They list two trucks plus a backup truck. Their rate is spring with unit on truck and one man, $225 an hour. Equipment and two men, $310 an hour, and two-and-a-half gallon backpack with six-foot hose, $85 an hour.
And they had all the certificates they needed there?
They did. Would you like me to read them totals one more time?
No, I was writing them down.
Okay.
The thing, the reason why we're doing this, we had on the bid that we were opening at 5:00 today, so they had, or else we'd had, open them sooner. So I'm not going to ask anybody to approve it because Darren has got to go out, make sure they've got the equipment, the licensing, the insurance. Take it away, Darren.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it. I mean, we got, I left a couple-week period here till the next meeting, so a guy just have time to go through it, look at the paperwork and everything also, and then decipher on, you know, buy their equipment, go look at their sprayers. I know their sprayers and stuff are not going to be on their trucks, but a guy can get a kind of an overall look at what they have for equipment. That's, that's the reason for that, too. And like Commissioner Schwab, or Mr. Schwab said, is that, you know, new to this. It wasn't aware that a guy could open them up before coming here, but I'm by the book, so that's why we ended up opening here. But I don't have anything other than this opening and reading of the bids tonight. And as far as that goes, my actual request would be that the Weed Board and Weed Officer will look over and review the bids that were submitted, January 6, 2025, and will award accepted contract on January 22, 2025, at the Weed Board meeting, and that is as stated in the notice of bids form. Is there anything else, gentlemen?
Do you have any other business?
Oh, they moved them, oh, okay. It's not Wednesday, the 22nd, it'll be January the 21st. That'd be a Tuesday then, right? There's nothing else, gentlemen, or?
I don't have any questions.
There's no other business, so the Weed Board meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Okay, well, with that, I'll call the January 6, 2025, meeting of the Burleigh County Commission to order. First business is board reorganization, election of chair and vice chair, and assignment of portfolios. Al, you want to take over? Oh, yes, this is the time to elect the chairman. Is there any nominations for chairman?
I would nominate Chair Bitner.
Is there any further nominations?
Commissioner, I would nominate Commissioner Munson.
Is there any further nominations for chairman? Any further nominations for chairman?
Can we discuss that?
Yeah.
Can we discuss that? Mr. Chairman, we can, we can discuss this, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The reason I nominated Commissioner Munson, a couple of reasons. He expressed an interest last year in moving up in the chairs, and that didn't come about, but I would, he liked, wants to be a chairman or the assistant chairman while he's in his elected commission. But I think everybody should have a chance of being a chairman, and that's, it's important. You learn a lot, you do a lot more activities, and you get paid, what, 50 bucks a month more? 100. 100 dollars. So there's the monetary, there's, there's the monetary aspect to it. No, I'm not kidding. He does want to move up, and I think you do an excellent job. And my main concern is Commissioner Bitner has got, you look at the next thing, item up is all of our portfolios, and he's got the Auditor Treasurer, which is really, really busy right now, planning and zoning, Bismarck planning, emergency finance, got finance, too. And I think that's a real, real burden, plus the building and grounds. He's got the Provident Life Building, which is a multimillion-dollar project that we have, he's going to have to have on hands-on almost every day while we're doing this. And so I think that just to cut down the load that you've got, I think we could, you could keep those portfolios that you are assigned and monitor those that still have input in all of them, and let Commissioner Munson take the chair for a year.
Actually, I think that Chair Bitner has more knowledge of that finance of the Auditor's Department and the financing of this county, and definitely, he's the lead man on the Provident Life, and I just hate to change a horse in the middle of a race. That is, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, or Auditor, that wouldn't change. If he keeps those portfolios and he still have both feet in on all those projects, be there 100% just like he would if he was chairman. But the chairmanship on top of it is, to me, a real burden, because all three, all three portfolios, if he maintains them, which I'm in favor of, will get by and we'll still have another Commissioner that has input as a chairman. Did we, did we get seconds on these?
We don't have to. It's just a nomination.
If there's no further discussion, we can take the vote. There's two ways we can do this. I can go around and take the vote for Commissioner Bitner, and then I can go around and take the vote for Commissioner Munson, or I can take one vote together. I talked to Julie about this. And you can just express who you would like to vote for for chairman, and then we can end it in one vote. Does anybody have any problems with doing it on that consolidated way?
That would be fine.
Okay. Commissioner Bakken.
Uh, Bitner.
Commissioner Woodcocks.
Munson.
Commissioner Schwab.
Bitner.
Commissioner Munson.
Munson.
Commissioner Bitner.
[laughing].
Current Chair Bitner.
Bitner.
And last but not least.
The deciding vote.
That's why I left you two till last, but Chair Bitner, you have retained the chair. You can now take over the meeting. All right. Thanks for that. Next would be nominations for vice chair. Personally, I would like to see the current vice chair stay as vice chair.
I'll nominate Commissioner Bakken.
Is there any other nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Commissioner Munson.
We're going down 3-2 again, aren't we?
Yep.
What a bet.
No, I don't think that's a fair thing. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, we'll do it the same way that we just did. You want to call? Commissioner Woodcocks.
Munson.
Mr. Schwab.
Bitner. Excuse me. Bakken.
Commissioner Bakken.
Bakken.
Commissioner Munson.
Munson.
Chair Bitner.
Bakken.
Bakken is the vice chair. So we decided that. Thank you, everybody. It's not a popularity contest. Go ahead.
This, I don't want to reflect on anything that you've done, because you've just been busier and you know what, and I just think with all the pipeline stuff that's going on, and you've got your handful, and you're going to have it again, even if not worse this year, so certainly if you need any help, step up and yell, because
I will.
that we're all here, and we're all of the same thinking on most projects, so.
Right. I appreciate that, Commissioner Woodcocks. The only thing I would have to say about that is that there are times, like when I'm dealing with the lawyers for the CO2 thing, that you basically have to make the call, you know, and just having the portfolio is probably not adequate, you know, for that at this point. I certainly try to keep everybody as informed as we can, but there are times where just having the portfolio isn't quite the same ability to make the call. And I added a, and a little bit of an item under other business about that, so we'll deal with that then. So let's move into assignment of portfolios. Does anybody want to switch or trade, or what are your thoughts?
Bakken.
Commissioner Munson.
Chair, you and I talked a while ago about possibly splitting up the Auditor Treasurer and having another portfolio holder in that department. I still would advocate for that if one of us wants to step up and figure that out. I think that's important.
Right.
The only, personally, I love the portfolios I have, and I'm more than happy to stay where I'm at, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. I did have
I would consider the fund that on the financials, if you do, if the reality is, if you're going to spend on extra set of eyes with what we're dealing with right now would be beneficial.
Right. And so I've thought a lot about this, and I know that a number of Commissioners have certainly, like yourself, have volunteered. I know Commissioner Schwab has, and I know Commissioner Bakken has as well. I think that at this point, as serious as that is, I would kind of like to have the vice chair in on those meetings.
I concur.
Because I think that would be continuity, and so that would be, my main focus as far as portfolios would be to add Commissioner Bakken to the Auditor Portfolio. And I don't know that we need a vote on that, do we?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, I would ask for a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner
Is it Auditor Treasurer and Finance? Because they're two separate portfolios that you have.
Auditor, Auditor Treasurer. That's, that's, because I'm not giving up the Finance, because we're, we're working through some pretty high-dollar stuff right now.
Would you prefer to have that Auditor Treasurer combined with a second portfolio holder, or do you want to split those departments?
No, I'd like two, two Commissioners
I would move then to add Commissioner Bakken to the Auditor Treasurer Portfolio.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? I should ask Commissioner Bakken, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Call the roll. Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries. It's kind of a funny way to get to this. The next item is roll call of members, please.
So everybody's good with their portfolios, other than that changing.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Bakken. It's a roll call of members. Did he say here?
Yep.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Commissioner Woodcocks.
Here.
Commissioner Munson.
Here.
Chair Bitner.
Here.
All members present. Okay, the next thing is approval of agenda. Anybody else want to make any changes or any additions, subtractions? I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to make a change. We have an item on the agenda that is continuation of discussion regarding Auditor Treasurer, and it's come to my attention that the Auditor is out of town, and I think that we should move that discussion to the next meeting, if that's all right with Commissioners. So we're going to delete continuation of item eight and move that to future agenda.
I believe that's January 21st.
Okay. Okay, other than that, I'm going to add a little bit under other business. I'm just going to talk real briefly about the Provident Building and about the CO2, just a little update on CO2.
Is there anyone in Summit Carbon Solutions in the room?
Can you understand him? Barely.
I don't see anybody.
Is anyone in Summit Carbon Solutions in the room?
Nope. The answer's no.
Thank you.
Mr. Bakken, you're broken up pretty good. Back up.
Sorry about that.
Back up a little bit.
Okay. So motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries. Next is consideration of the December 2, 2024 minutes, December 4, 2024 special meeting minutes, December 23, 2024 special meeting minutes, and December 16, 2024 meeting minutes and bills. There's, I talked with you earlier concerning the minutes. Yeah, and I didn't get a chance to see those ones from, that were written before, but like I said, if there's a set of minutes out there that needs a signature on them that, for me to review, I would be fine with that, if, if you have that copy.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcocks.
I have one, and I tried to find it, but I thought I marked it, but apparently I didn't. On one of the meetings where we had our state auditor here, and he went over what they do and all that, and there's one whole conversation that I asked him a question concerning whether the state audit actually does audit the investments we make, the amount of money we make on the interest rate, the distribution, and that whole, whole thing. And he said, no, that the state audit does not look into that at all, and our audit, our current auditor said he's relying upon the audit of the state to be the thing that you're looking at as being accurate. Well, it's accurate, but it isn't inclusive. It doesn't include any of the investment strategy, workings, committee, or anything like that. So I want to make sure that that's in there, because he did say, no, there was nothing that the state does that affects that type of thing.
Okay. How about if we talk about that a little bit further under item nine for investment discussion also?
We can't approve these minutes.
I don't want to approve these
I don't, I don't think we should approve them, because there was also something that I saw that needed changing. When the discussion was, we were talking about the ARPA contracts. Now, I'm not sure which one of these meetings. I think it was a special meeting minutes, but in the minutes that I reviewed, it's, we were talking about goods and services, if you recall that, state's attorney or lawyer. And, and I said, well, it needed to say goods and services instead of good and services. And in the minutes, it said, it was only supposed to say goods, which was not the intention. I believe we said good, then
That's correct, and that's not how we changed it either. We just added an S to good.
Right.
Correct.
Yep, okay. And so the minutes don't reflect that appropriately. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve the December 23rd, I think that was the 23rd.
Yep. That's, I'm looking at them right now.
Okay. If, if we approve those, it would be with that change from my perspective, but we'd have to, we almost have to see it. Yeah.
Yeah, I would move we table the minutes until our next meeting.
Second.
Yeah, a motion to second to table minutes until the next meeting. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll. Commissioner Munson.
Aye.
Mr. Bakken.
Aye.
Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries. Next is consent agenda abatements and waiving of delinquent taxes and specials related to annual tax sale. You Yeah, I'm aware of that. So Chairman and Commissioners, the waiving of the special assessments and tax, so if you, if you recall back in, I think it's November, we have a tax, an annual tax sale. We come to you guys in like August or September, we set the minimum sale price for those properties. There was properties that had special assessments that belonged to different entities that we carried on the tax rolls in, from 2023 over to 2024. So they got put into Burleigh County's name, because when they, when they don't sell, they become the property of Burleigh County. So we then set a minimum sale price of a dollar on these properties to try and clear them off of our tax rolls. And so they, they sold for, the lowest one was, I think, $1. And so the process then is we have to ask the commission to waive the penalty and interest fees. It's, it's a standard process, it's in century code, and it's because those properties sold, so we can pass the deed to the people who purchased them. Okay. The city's aware, the city's aware, too. Okay. I have an email that was forwarded to me. I don't know if you want to read it, because it was one that, it's a question that you and I talked about, and you were going to monitor it, so. Yeah, that's not this properties at all. That's completely unrelated. Okay, just so we're clear on that. Okay. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, and an additional second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcocks.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries. Next, County Planner Flanagan, Wrath subdivision. Welcome, Mitch.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. On the agenda is the subdivision for Wrath, subdivision's located out in Taft Township. The legal description is part of the Northwest Quarter, Section 4, Township 138 North, Range 76 West. Beginning in September, ILS, or Independent Land Surveyors, dropped this plat off for our, for our county staff review. It's a four-lot subdivision comprising a total of 153.81 acres. All parcels are zoned ag. Taft Township maintains their own zoning, they're organized township. Lot 1 is 10 acres, lot 2 is 96.6, lot 3 is 1303, and lot 4 is 29.91 acres. A paving waiver was approved on October 7. Last year, stormwater management plan was approved on December 2 of last year. There were 14, four revisions to the plat for this to reach Article 33 ordinance. It was recommended 8 to 0 for approval at the December 11 Planning Commission.
Okay. I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion, motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mitch. Next is authorization to advertise for bids under County Engineer Hall, but I understand he's someplace soaking up some sun.
Let's hope so. Much needed for him. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our one and only item on the agenda tonight is the authorization for proper county officials to advertise for the purchase of the reinforced concrete box culverts to replace bridge number 08-126-40.0. This is the bridge located 4.2 miles south of Highway 10 on 236th Street Southeast. At the December 16 County Board meeting, the board directed the county highway department to move forward to replace that bridge with a box culvert, and in order to speed this process up, we're looking to bid the culverts out before we bid out the actual construction just to do, to guarantee we get the materials on hand and get that bridge in place in 2025. So there's a proposed resolution in your packet. I would stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Just, Dan
Commissioner Schwab.
So they understand why we had talked about the length and stuff, kind of give them a little information on these culverts so they understand.
Yeah, the, it's going to be a three-cell box culvert, approximately 70 feet in length, 10 by 7, so triple 10 by 7 box culvert. We're looking at roughly a half million to $600,000 is what we're anticipating for just the culvert itself, material only. What we anticipate happening is whomever gets it will store it at their facility until we're ready for it, and then they would deliver it to the site as the contractor needs it.
Good.
So.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll. Mr. Schwab.
Yes.
Mr. Munson.
Yes.
Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
Mr. Woodcocks.
Yes.
Chair Bitner. Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Burleigh County Investment Discussion. I was having a conversation one day with Commissioner Schwab, and we thought that it would be pretty important to clarify and we thought that it would be pretty important to clarify a couple of things, um, based on comments from a previous meeting. One of those was that there was a comment that someone made that said, well, if you have this money and you're concerned about the investments, why don't you just give it back to the citizens? And so I thought it would be appropriate to have a little conversation about why that's not done. For example, um, the largest portion, probably half of the money that, that we have available and that's invested is relative to the sales tax and the paying off the jail bond. And then, uh, there was some 18 million that was involved with the ARPA funds, and those were, um, utilized as investments, so, um, none of, none of that funding would be available to return to the citizens, because the sales tax dollars are intended to offset property taxes soon. You know, how, how we have that planned. And so that was some clarification, and then a lot of the other, um, things are relative to how we budget for, um, different expenditures throughout the year. You know, we, we invest, we collect tax money at the beginning of the year, and then we're holding that money and you have to do something with it, rather than, rather than let it sit in a, um, in a, in a, basically a checking account for no interest. So we turn, turn around and make investment income on that money that's been collected, um, right here at the beginning of the year. So then the investments are set to mature at certain times when we know that there's, um, a need for more money in the checkbook. Um, so just for clarification on that one item, those are not dollars that we could just return to the citizens, because those are dollars we collect from the citizens for county operations for the most part. So that was, that was the main point, that the main reason I put that on the, on the agenda. I think that, uh, uh, maybe, maybe the finance director would maybe have something he'd want to add to that at all, or? I mean, you don't have to unless.
Uh, yeah, Chair and Commissioners, I, I did take a look as of, uh, November 30th, and Chair Bittner, you're, you're correct. It was about, about half of our cash and investment balance was the, the Bank of North Dakota, uh, sales tax related stuff. And then we still have, we, we received 18 million in, in, uh, ARPA funding, and we still have 13.6. So those two combined make up about 60% of our, of our balance right now.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Woodcox?
How, how are they invested right now? I know it's a summary of several things, but can you review roughly what we've done?
Yes, uh, Bank of North Dakota, that's, that's the one where we invested those funds out to 2032 in order to, um, to pay off our sales tax bond. So we've got a, a, a bond at two and a quarter interest is what we're paying, and we've invested, uh, the sales tax at, I think it's about four, four and a quarter. So we're making that spread all the way out until 2032. Um, so that was a, that was a really, really good use of those funds. And then the, the, uh, ARPA funds are in a first international money market, and we're, we're spending those down. We're going to reimburse, um, the general fund another $2 million here, um, shortly.
And they draw what type of interest?
I think, last I, I think last I checked, it was 4.3 in the, in the money market.
Great.
That's going to decline, I mean, as rates go down, but, you know, it could level off too.
Okay, while, while you're up there, I'll change this up just a little bit under the same topic, but, um, we, we have an investment committee. And the only thing, uh, the investment committee is probably established under the investment policy is, is that.
It's part of the policy.
Yeah, it's part of the policy. So what I, what I think we should do is, is review that policy. First off, the, some of the names on the bottom of the policy at this point aren't here anymore.
Right.
Um, so I think we need to review that policy and, um, make some changes to it. And one of the changes I would suggest is that we should probably add, at least for now, two commissioners, probably the two commissioners that are involved in the portfolios, to the investment committee. So that, um, so that we have a, a better hands-on approach to the finances, because we're all aware of, of that. So what are your thoughts?
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Monson?
So, from recollection of reading, reading the policy, you've got the auditor treasurer, finance director, the deputy, and then you're going to, you would like to add two commissioners. That makes perfect sense to me.
I, I think the HR director is on there too, I thought.
No, it's the deputy finance director. Deputy.
Deputy.
It's the finance director and the deputy. Yep.
We have asked the HR director to, to come to a few meetings because of the, the health insurance, um, funds are, are being invested in.
Gotcha, that was my mistake then.
So it's not the deputy auditor treasurer, it's the deputy finance director?
It's the, it's the auditor, the deputy auditor treasurer, the finance director, the deputy finance director. That's who's in the policy. It's, so it's, there's four people right now.
There's four, okay.
I think we should add, um, I think we should add some oversight to, additional involvement, I guess.
You want a motion on that?
Yes.
I would move to approve to add, move that we add the two commissioners that are involved in that portfolio to that, uh, committee.
Investment committee.
Investment committee.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second, any further discussion? I would like to add that, um, in, in between now, we'll, we should put this on the agenda for the next, um, commission meeting also, so that we can review that policy, take a look at it and make any other changes that, that might be necessary, such as those names that we talked about. Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, just to continue that. Any other conversation on it? Commissioner Schwab?
I don't know if this would belong in there, but I would like to see a spreadsheet of every account we have that, an investment account, when it needs to be renewed, and what the interest rates are before that. A spreadsheet like that, is that possible to do that?
That is.
So we know, the commissioners know that this money isn't sitting around not drawing interest.
I, I think he's already been working on that.
We, yes, so we, I, I actually just sent that email out about a week ago, um, requesting that from the deputy finance director.
I reviewed that over a week.
So we'll get right on that when he, uh, returns from his vacation.
Are you including the, um, the current interest rate? You know, when you invest, what the highest interest rate is and stuff, so we know that it's getting the maximum amount of return?
Well, that, that's what's supposed to be happening.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, that's not what's been happening.
But that, that brings up, the last thing I have to say is, it seems to me like most of the time treasuries are outperforming everything else, right? Pretty much?
I, I think lately they, they have been. They, they shot up and, and stayed up for quite a while.
I, I don't believe in make-believe benchmarks, and I think we need to figure out a way to use treasuries or whatever's the top investment as a benchmark. Is that supposed to be for a year then? Or can you change your benchmark as you invest?
We, we can, yeah.
Yeah, see, benchmark is not written in stone.
Yeah.
I mean, you, the goal is to get, you know, liquidity and safety, and then return on investment. So if, if you just simply say that one thing is your only benchmark, that wouldn't be appropriate, because then if that was on the lower end of return, then you wouldn't be, you know. So the benchmark is, is a term that intends for us to shoot for. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think so.
So I don't think we'd want to say that any one thing is the only benchmark, that's a variable.
I, I really didn't mean it's the only, only one, but you know, uh, there's got to be a way that we're kind of comparing it like a CDs are higher. Normally, you're going to go for a CD.
Yeah, that, that's the whole point in having the investment committee.
So it's pretty tough to set a benchmark, actually.
Yeah, I, I could read a little thing here that was sent to me is, "The investment committee slash investment officer shall establish strategies and guidelines for the percentage of the total portfolio that may be invested in securities other than repurchase agreements, treasury bills, or collateralized, collateralized certificates of deposit." So, um, the, the committee is charged with doing what you're talking about. And that's, that's why I'm suggesting that we add commissioners to it, so that some of these things are being followed. Because right now, there's other things, and I was gonna, I was gonna take my highlighter while I was going through the, the policy, and I'll, I'll have that done by the next meeting, but, um, there's, there's things that, um, just haven't been happening, um.
Isn't, isn't the, uh, investment officer, which would be the treasurer, right?
Correct.
Aren't they supposed to report to the commission every four months?
Every three months, every quarter.
Every three months? Well, I've been here for two years, and I haven't seen.
Yeah, that, that's, that's where the, that's where the problem is.
Yeah.
Um, or that's part, that's one of the issues. And, um, you know, it's the finance department that's been bringing that to our attention, and so I didn't want my comments to indicate that the finance department, um, was, was part of that. But we're going to work our way through this. We have to. So, um, I believe we need a roll call?
Yeah, we need a roll call, we have a motion in a second.
Good.
Uh, does anyone need me to read, read the motion?
Yes.
Uh, the motion is by Commissioner Monson, and seconded by Commissioner Woodcox, to add Chair Bakken, or Chair Bittner and Vice Chair Bakken to the investment policy.
Committee.
Committee, so that way they, they can oversee some discussion, um, along with I'm adding that investment policy back to the 21st agenda, so.
Good.
Uh, Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, under other business.
Um, I have a, can I have a quick question, Lee's still sitting there?
Sure.
We've started collecting sales tax the last two months. What does that amount to? Have we got a rough ballpark figure? To reduce, this is all to reduce property tax. Everything that we're collecting with that one cent sales tax goes to direct reduction of property tax. Is that the amounts for maybe October, November?
I, so for, we've, we've received October, and just because of literally a technicality, it was low. It's just because of the day of the month that it fell on, they didn't have to send us the check. It happens, we talked to the tax department. I did just look at that, and, and we think it should land in the range of about 24 million a year.
Wow.
And so, just something, i- if you, if you add interest on top of that, you know, if we, if we use the interest for the same purpose as the, um, as the sales tax, it'll be, it'll be even more, you know, maybe 25.
Okay, continue. We were anticipating, I think, 21 to 21 and a half, so that's a real boost if you get an extra two and a half, three million, so. Phenomenal, yeah. All the property tax.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it's going to basically eliminate the county portion of the property taxes based on what we levied for property taxes this year, but not right away. We need to, let's don't, let's don't let everybody think that that's going to happen right away this next budget year, because of the timing of this, all of that money won't be in hand when we do the next budget. Some will. So you'll probably see a partial deduction.
Correct.
And then subsequent to that, in further years moving forward, you're going to see the full benefit of that in additional, I just, Commissioner Woodcox?
We are properly investing that, you said, right?
We.
As it comes out?
Well, we've had one receipt, and that has been invested, um, until, I think that one went out to December of 2025. One thing that I do intend to bring, um, to the next meeting or very soon after, I think the next, is a, a cash forecast, or an estimate of how much cash we'll have at the end of the year, at the end of 2025, going into that first year, an estimate of what the expenses will be. And then basically, I think the commission may want to decide, how do we invest that? I don't need to go and do it right now, but it's like, like, say we have $24 million, I guess I am going into it right now. Say we have $24 million in the bank at the end of December. Do we want to spend that in equal portions throughout the year? Do we want to spend it all at one time, you know, and, and then at the end of the year have to, you know? So there's just, it's just a little technicality, but that would influence how we invest it and when it matures and stuff, but.
Okay, I, I can tell you one of the concerns that I have and will have to figure out is because, you know, state law requires that we have a minimum of 25% of our yearly budget held in reserves. And we're probably in that 40, 50% range, something like that, um, now. But there's a possibility with this money being held on to that we might actually bump up against the, the century code limit of 75% of the, of the budget that's actually being held. And so we're going to have to work out those details yet. Don't think that this is, um, you know, just going to happen automatically, because we, we could have issues to deal with because of having, holding that money, even though it's being held for budgetary purposes, right? So we'll, we'll work that out.
See, and it may be a liability to us, if you think about it, when we collect it, we're saying we will use this for property tax buydown in 2026. So it may, it may be on the books as a liability to us, rather than a, you know, a fund balance type of thing, so that may work itself out, but we'll, we'll, um, we, we may, we may, we may, excuse me, we may need to look to the state auditor's office for some guidance on that during this financial statement audit. Might be a good time to pick their brains, because we're going to have to, to start booking that, actually, this year, because we just received it, so.
Okay. Thanks for that information. Uh, there wasn't any other, um, decisions required there?
I have one, one very important idea, or an idea, an item.
Under other business.
I move that we pay the bills. I happened to look at them today, and, uh, they were all fine, so I recommend we, we move the, we pay the bills. Second. Wasn't on the list.
Good call, Commissioner.
Wasn't on the list.
A motion in a second to pay the bills, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Commissioner Bakken? Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chair Bittner?
Yes, motion carries. Under other business, I got two things real quick, because I know we want to get you out of here for that, uh, football game, Commissioner. Um, Providence Building, um, we, we had a little, a little thing go on with the Providence Building where suddenly the, um, um, what do you call it on the roof? That weather beacon wasn't working. Well, I've come to find out that some phone lines were cut. And so we're working on getting the phone lines repaired there for the weather beacon. And then we realized also, um, Kevin, Kevin Quinn told me that, um, the other thing that was impacted at the same time was the emergency phones in the elevators. So I asked that he, that he put a label, or put a note on, or by the button, so people knew that if you're going into the Providence Building and utilizing the elevators, that you have your cellphone on you, or something. And then, um, so I've also asked the, the maintenance folks to do a sweep, basically to ensure that nobody is trapped in an elevator before the last people leave for the day. And we did notify staff and, and everybody that's utilizing the building and whatnot to be aware of that until we, until we get the emergency phones fixed. And I think there, it's probably the same pair of wires, because usually you have four, you know, two pairs in a, in a phone line, and that's probably what happened there. There was some cleanup work that went on with the electrician stuff. And so that's, basically that's just for information. And the other thing is, um, um, I received an email recently from our attorney representing us on the CO2, um, case, and I wonder if maybe state's attorney lawyer would want to comment on that? Nope? Okay, I'll comment for you. Ba- basically, what, what the attorneys are suggesting is that we, there, there's a word for it, but that we work together with the other, um, the other people that are making appeals also, like Emmons County and then landowners, and I think consolidate it into one case before the judge. And it seems to make sense to me. Um, and I think, um, the state's attorney felt the same way. I think there's efficiencies and, and things with that. So unless you want to add.
No, that was pretty much it, just that we're, um, agreeing to consolidate the cases in front of one judge to make it more efficient.
Unless anybody has a problem with that? No, I, um, yeah, actually, that would be helpful.
Just a consensus?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. You agree?
Chair, you agree?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, you agree?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken, are you still there?
Yep.
You agree? Okay, I agree as well, so like consensus, we're, we're good with that. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything for the, for the good of Burley County? Seeing none, we are adjourned.